Okay. Good evening. Welcome to Board of Trustees meeting for Grand Blank Township for Tuesday, October 4th. Could all rise for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Clerk Robertson, would you care to call the roll?
I would be happy to. Hugo?
Here.
Fike?
Here.
Raridan?
Here.
White?
Here.
Kilmer?
Here.
Myself, of course. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven members present. A quorum.
Thank you. And now I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda. Ms. Hugo makes that motion, supported by?
Agenda. Motion by Hugo.
Supported by?
Supported by Fike. Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven-nothing motion passes.
Thank you. And now we will move to public comment. And we just ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. And if you could give your name and address for the record, that'd be helpful. Anybody care to make public comment? Okay. See no public comment. We'll bring it back here to the board. And I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the consent agenda at this time. Support by Dr. Raridan, support by Mr. Fike.
A motion by Fike, supported by Raridan. Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
A seven-nothing motion passes.
Thank you. Item six, all business strategic plan or Saginaw Street corridor improvements. Mr. Limina?
So, this item came up, and if you remember, two weeks ago, we had the big map that we threw into conference room A and asked everybody to kind of take a look at it. We're still following up with that as the agenda item for the review of the strategic plan. I guess the next step in it is we need to figure out if the board agrees on where those boundaries will be set. Some of that conversation, it wasn't your packet. I think the big map is still in here for illustrative purposes. And you can see that we're, our conversation about where this map was going to be to delineate the business district would be where this, you first go into the township coming up Saginaw, and out of the city limits, you hit the township border, that it would start there, that runs up through the auto dealerships, and comes along, hits the point, and then follows out Dort Highway and up Saginaw. And I guess the comments that we were looking for from the board are, is this, are we heading in the right direction? Is this what you had envisioned? Does it need to be expanded, cut down? Because we actually have to include the number of parcels, the actual parcels in as we create the district. And then if you're going to create a TIF or an authority, one of the things that comes in is the number of residential parcels in there, whether you'll have to have a residential board as well that approves plans that you push through for the TIF. So, it's kind of important that we get the boundary set. And I know, at one point, we talked about, is it Hill all the way to Fenton, Fenton around? I would caution you on getting too big for that size of a business district if we're really trying to focus on the area. And I guess that was my impression, staff's impression, is that the board was more focused on the actual business corridor along Saginaw, Dort, between Hill and Maple. So, if you guys could go into that conversation, that would be very helpful to us on starting to delineate this plan.
So, Mr. Limina, there's, there are a couple of areas we've got to cut out, or that we talked about cutting out. For example, the Mobile Home Park, right? That's on the north part of?
Yep. The Mobile Home Park will be cut out because there's not really any sense to include it, quite frankly.
Right.
You know, the discussion may be on the General Motors portion of the building. Should General Motors be included or not? You know, I don't know. It will, again, there's a very real possibility, if you create this as a TIF district, that it will have a negative balance if it loses taxable value for the first few years until something happens. Will General Motors help or hurt your efforts in creating that, you know, at least, at this point, it's being called like the Point North Business District? Those are some of the conversations that you should probably have around that.
Question, Mr. Supervisor?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yeah?
A question. I think you're right, I think we're right to focus on the Saginaw Street as you described it. But if we wanted to expand the TIF in the future, is that, as, I was thinking of Fenton Road, is that, is that still a possibility?
Yes, however.
You have to go through the whole process again. And, and when you're ready for the process, I mean, it's just like the DDA, basically. We're going to have a public hearing, we're going to have to send notice out to the property owners, we're going to have to notify the taxing jurisdictions, we wait 60 days, and then we're able to finalize it. So, if you wanted to add to it, you can, but, but you have to go through that process again.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm just curious. Thank you.
I would, my own thoughts are, I mean, and we could include a lot of other, but I think we need to focus, and?
I agree.
My own thought is Saginaw Street and Dort are probably the two that need the most attention.
I agree.
You know, Fenton could use some, but I think the other two need even more, is my own thought. And I think we do want to limit it as much as possible to business parcels also.
And so, when you settle on the actual delineation for the map, then give yourselves about a 90-day runway to handle the, the first thing we'll do is adopt a resolution that recognizes the district, and then we'll begin the notification process. So, that'll take about 90 days, once, once we actually schedule that first public hearing. So, that, that should be your timeline. I mean, I think if, if, like, went, early winter, that would probably be a pretty good, reasonable timeline, if, if you decide to move forward and set up a district.
What does everyone think of the, the map? If we carved out the Mobile Home Park and Dort, I don't know if there's any other residential areas on that map, Dennis, that we needed to carve?
You'll pick up a few residential homes in here. And again, there's nothing wrong with that. It's probably not going to turn into commercial. I mean, the potential is that it could some other time. It won't necessarily hurt you to have the residential in there, but it's also not why you're forming the TIF district. It's really to focus on commercial enterprise.
So, as far as governance of the TIF, how does that work?
Just like the DDA. We'll be setting up an authority board, going to be a lot of stakeholders. We're going to have property owners as well as stake, I mean, they don't have to necessarily be property owners in a district, but it helps. We'll pick eight people, and it'll, it'll look just like our DDA.
So, we won't have to have a separate component for residential or what have you?
I'll have to double-check on that. I mean, we did in the, we did with the DDA, and actually, frankly, it's, it's, to me, it's a nice safety valve, frankly. It has a nice bit of balance. And so, and so we should probably, I mean, don't let that phase you at all. Like, that's, that is not a detail that should bother you at all.
People for that.
Yeah. So, block that out a few.
All right.
Just, all that really occurs when that happens is it provides a review opportunity for a panel of residents. So, it's not a bad thing for them to review before you move forward with your authority plan and TIF plan.
I think, you know, we want to do something in this area, and I, you know, we've been scratching our head for a while on what we can do. And so, while there may be, you know, the possibility of some negatives, I think the upside, I don't see, I don't know, I shouldn't say, I don't see this area going down any further, but I, I think there's more room for improvement than, than the negative consequences of it.
And some of the things that we need to do, and I, I think we discussed this when we first talked about this concept, is we're going to have to make a commitment to, to facilitate improvements, whether it be zoning ordinance-wise, not, we can't mess with the building codes too much, but we have to fast-track building code improvements, zoning ordinance improvements. We have to make a commitment, and we already have done this all over the township, for, for interconnections, for walkability, things like that. And so, we need, we're going to be able to, I guess, not tinker, but we're going to be able to really create kind of a fast-track toward and incentivize improvements. And I don't, you guys have been talking about that since the beginning of this. That was one of your goals, was to make it easier to make things better. And, and so I think with some consideration in our ordinance, and, and our building permit process is already very streamlined and very easy, very user-friendly, we'll make sure that that is, that's as efficient as it can be. And so, I, I really don't, I, this is, this jives perfectly with your philosophy for this area.
Okay. Well, I think, Mr. Fike?
I guess my only concern is about the GM plan. We seem to be saying that they probably won't be investing in that site. And that's kind of a prime site. If they do make investments there, and it's in the TIF district, we stand to gain, right? Yeah. I mean, you could if, if they did, but the, the alternative is, if you include, it's a very large industrial site, and all, if they do is continue to use it as warehouse space, maybe it'll hold its value, maybe it'll lose a little value, depending on commercial market. It, because it has such a huge impact, the dollar amount compared to a lot of the other areas, it could have the impact of making you carry a negative balance for longer. But it does, it has tremendous upside, obviously, if they were suddenly looking for someplace to start producing whatever, again, for a General Motors would be great. I know that they told us a long time ago, when there was, we had a few different parties over the years who were interested in taking a look at the plant, that it was just absolutely not for sale, no interest, General Motors has no interest whatsoever in divesting those that plant. But it's, it's a tough call, quite frankly, whether you're, you know, do you want to include it? Do you not want to include it? I mean, we looked at it, do we include it and go all the way over to Dort through General Motors where it comes out on Dort, and then bring it up like that? I mean, you've got to be careful with your TIF district. If you, if you start creating authorities in TIF districts over the entire township, you're going to get pushed back on taxing authorities who say, wait a minute, you know, we need to have some taxable growth come to us. So, it, there's that danger as well, of making it so big that we have people object, and then they opt out of participating in the TIF.
Anybody else on that?
Well, just, part of the GM plants in the city, correct?
Yes.
Is that going to be its own issue, having, dividing it essentially amongst the city and the township, and then in a separate TIF for part of it versus the other part? That just, to me, seems like it could be the, it would probably just get a little bad word.
The other thing about that property is, is it has a very capable landlord, right, or owner. It, I mean, this, this, this thing, this device is called a corridor improvement authority. It isn't, it isn't an industrial property facilitator. It's meant to improve lighted properties. And if you have an owner, a very, a very well-off owner that has definite ideas on how they want to develop it, I don't necessarily see how they would benefit either their own property, but also anybody else's.
But in those terms, I would say we probably should leave them out.
Okay.
Does anybody?
I agree.
Add to that?
I agree with you.
And no discussion of any expansion, nobody's interested in expansion downhill, or at this time, you think we, you know, again, like, the Point North Business District kind of rings true, and it really, we looked at this as, this is where people roll in from the north end, right, coming into us. And this is the part we wanted to improve. We want good signage, we want good lighting, we want, you know, sidewalks, and then we want those facades improved, if nothing else. And I think we can make a lot of progress with that, inside that business district, even if we didn't, again, don't forget, we did discuss also like a revolving loan fund, where we can, you know, create a low interest, set aside a certain amount of money and create that, you know, and it's kind of first come, first served. When it's out, it's out, while we get paid back, it becomes more, becomes available. But it does give us that option to even just do some of those facade improvements. I mean, just in the most recent time, Cinemom locating in has, has cleaned up that side of the corner, the old, it was like auto dealership or something down here, next to the bar, we're in between the two bars, that got purchased and cleaned up. It's so good to see that, right, that we're, we're seeing some progress. This plan is designed to support that kind of effort. Without, again, I, I don't think it's going to be, I mean, with the DDA, you hear us talking about, hey, we can bond 4.1 million dollars with the DDA, and they've only been around for three years. That's not this. It's going to be much smaller scale, and it, and it may run a negative balance for a while, but, but that's okay. I mean, eventually, the idea, the long-range goal is doing, is to create a logo, create an identity, create that branding effort, right?
Part of Hill Road I would include is right along between Dort and Saginaw, that area right there, you know, those corners that are included, which I think's on the map. Clerk Robertson?
Yes, through you, Mr. Supervisor, to Trustee White. Paul, this has been a priority of yours over the last nearly two years. Are you pleased with what you're seeing as far as progress is concerned?
I, I think this is, this is fine. I, I had always focused more on the, I would say, north of Hill, but I have no problem tying in Hill down to the city. I think that's perfectly fine. There's some, frankly, less, less than desirable-looking areas along Dort on that section as well, so I think it ties in well.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Supervisor.
Anybody else have any thoughts? Everybody, we have a consensus that we want to move forward, it sounds like, and we just need to probably come back with a map that has whatever areas delineated from it, and then?
So, we'll have GIS redefine it, we'll cut out the, what we discussed, we'll send it out to the board for review, you guys can comment on it. I think it would also be good now to see if you can schedule another meeting to bring the business owners in, you know, one more time, this is our third attempt, bringing everybody in. Now show them the map, maybe talk about, you know, the kind of the Point North Business District concept, and see if we can't grow some legs or some enthusiasm through those efforts as well.
All right. Very good. Okay. Next on the agenda, item seven, public hearing. The subject of this truth and taxation hearing is the property tax millage rates to support the proposed 2023 general fund and special revenue fund budgets. And, Mr. Limina?
So, the purpose of the truth and taxation hearing is to give people the opportunity to provide you guys some public comment if they so desire on the millage rates for 2022. If we hold the truth and taxation hearing, it has to do with the reduction fraction in the amount that you can charge. The millage rates have rolled back, as they will, but they don't roll back as much. We get to hold on to a little bit more of it when you actually hold the hearing. So, the difference to you, the calculation of loss of revenue on that 0.2111 mils would be about $320,872 that you would give up if you didn't hold the truth and taxation hearing. And so, the whole point is, we've always done this, it's been, I mean, most municipalities do, you don't want to give up more millage, and you have to on the rollback. And by doing that, you just open up the public hearing, see if there's anybody who wants to make public comment, and then later on, you'll be asked to adopt a resolution, I believe, on this one, to adopt those millage rates to support your fiscal year 2023 general fund and special revenue fund budgets.
Any thoughts, concerns? Okay, I think it's rudimentary. Okay. Somebody care to make, well, we'll open it up to the public and see if there's any comment. So, we'll open the public hearing at this time. Does anybody wish to make public comment on the truth and taxation, on the property tax millage rates? Okay. Seeing no comment, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board. And at this time, we don't vote on this till a little bit later in the meeting, so we'll cover, be back to this issue. Number eight, under new business, the board will hear a presentation on the proposed 2023 budget from the department heads. Mr. Limina?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Supervisor, members of the board. The fiscal year 2023 proposed budget, we follow the same process every year, and we assembled all of the department heads here this evening. They'll each walk through a portion of the budget, they'll share with you their proposed budget, and especially highlighting any areas that may be impacted by the strategic plan and carrying out those activities, if there's new requests for funding that are outside of our normal requests. And it's really to show you a broad overview by department of everything coming for you. What we've done in the past is, you know, everyone's here to answer any questions at any time. Typically, we blow through the presentation or get through it, probably takes about 25 or 30 minutes, and then we entertain questions at any time. However, if you're more comfortable with stopping any one of us during the process because you'd like to ask the question then, feel free, that'd be fine. Requirements for our budgeting process, I always like to point out, I know you guys have been through this a few times now, but for members of the public who watch this live or watch it later, is the difference between a lot of folks that worked in the private sector and whether or not?
You grab the microphone, Mr. Limina?
Whether or not they had a, whether or not you have a budget in, in the private sector doesn't matter, you're not required. In the public sector, we're required to have a budget. And really, what does that budget mean? It's, it's a legally binding document that you're required, every local municipality, local government is required to adopt a budget for the end of the year. And again, it's not an authorization to spend for us as staff, it's, it's a roadmap that says, this is how we intend to spend our revenue. Our budgets are really revenue-driven. When you look at the difference between a public and private sector budget, the public sector budget were to maximize services. In the private sector, it's all about making more money, right? It's about driving value for the owners of the company or for stockholders of the company. Ours is about maximizing services. So, we've got to get the revenue right, and our entire objective is to maximize service delivery. Whenever I talk about this, I do like to point out that this township has done a really good job of weathering the storm and providing services when you go back to the recession, 2007, and you realize that, we talk a lot about the taxable value, and we'll hit on it, that we just got to the taxable value of what we had in 2007, 2008, and since we're a millage-driven organization, we finally got to the revenue that we had back in that time. We never cut services through all of that. The huge loss of revenue, we continue to offer the same services, and I think that's really important. Townships are a statutory government entity. What that means is, there's mandated functions and they're discretionary functions. The mandated functions that the state constitution requires you guys to do are those three things on the left: tax collection, property assessment, and elections administration. Those are the only three requirements that the state constitution says you guys have to do. So, you're going to see a $20 million general fund budget come through here, we've got to take care of tax collection, property assessment, and elections administration. Everything else is considered a discretionary function. Now, if you ask the taxpayers whether it's discretionary to have fire protection or police services, I think they probably disagree. I think they, think that that's a mandatory function, because those are the things that government does, right? But that whole list over there is what we get to do and have the opportunity to do. But that's what we're doing when we ask folks how we're doing spending their money. We have choices to make in all of those things. And again, it's important when we talk about the treasurer, the clerk, and the assessing department. Those are the three departments that, quite frankly, we couldn't do without. Budget goals for 2023: maintain or increase the levels of service, make sure that we fund the adopted strategic plan initiatives, expand economic development opportunities, which is also one of our strategic planning initiatives, and budget for capital projects. That's important because capital projects are outside of our normal operating budget. We've got to make sure we're setting aside enough money to buy police cars, fire trucks, buildings, those kind of things. So, that is one of our goals, and you'll, you'll see that we've addressed it. A couple of strategic plan successes that are in the 2022 budget and we're carrying forward in the 2023 budget and beyond: branding. We just had a good conversation about the Point North Business District, as well as the new signs, GBT, the things that we've done already with our signage, and there's more to come this year with the street signs, the welcome to Grand Blank Township. New facilities, we're in the process of talking about our new fire station and DPS facility on the campus here. You guys will be having a, something to consider on your agenda immediately after this presentation about those. So, again, strategic planning, we've made excellent progress, we continue to do it. Unfunded liabilities: retiree healthcare, 13% funded seven years ago, 106.7% funded as of December 31st of last year, unactuarially speaking. We all know the challenges there, we're not ready to take our foot off the gas, and it has a lot to do with the DPW overfunding, and we're still underfunded in some other areas. But we also have a pension plan for the police department that we're working on, that's really critical. We're in negotiations, we've made excellent progress, I feel very confident that we'll find a solution to help us address that plan, but it's not without its challenges, and we cannot ignore that that is still one of our strategic plan, both a success and a challenge moving forward. And of course, economic development. Thank God for the progress that we've seen on the south end of the township with the DDA, with KCI sewer project is going to make that happen. Again, the DDA with the Baldwin Road upgrade, $4.1 million of, of DDA funds coupled with 1.7 million from the federal government, and that's what made Enterprise Park happen. We've got the beautiful Fessler Bowman headquarters, should be up and running, they hope by the end of the year, another 200,000-square-foot building under construction right now. We're real excited to see that happen, but again, those are some of the successes and challenges we have. Budget outlook for 2023, great news. 2022 SEV after border review, $1.9 billion, up 4.5% over the prior year. Fabulous. 2022 taxable value, $1.5 billion, up 5.9% over the prior year. 10 straight years of taxable value growth. Not every municipality can say that, and it's, feels darn good to be able to say that. Our challenges remain, though: headly rollbacks, limit revenue from millage funds. Proposal A: limits growth in the taxable value unless they're on cap. Personal property tax losses and veteran exemption impacts our revenue stream. More than $8.6 billion has been diverted away from communities by the state, and that's had to do with revenue sharing since 2001 through 2016. Good news is, our revenue sharing came up because of the census, most recent census. We saw an increase in our revenue sharing, so that's great. But it increased cost of goods and services. It costs us more, wage flations up, healthcare is way up. Again, doing it with the revenue that we had back in 2008. State legal requirements for the budget, it's a financial plan, and it's one of the most significant of all policymaking opportunities to the seven individuals sitting up in the front of this room. This is your budget, not my budget, not the staff's, as your budget manager, and we work to put it together, but make no mistake, this is, you guys drive this. You guys tell us if we're doing the right thing, if we've allocated the money in the right way. A lot of it chases your strategic plan initiatives or the things that you're being told by residents. We stay compliant with Uniform Budget and Accounting Act, we go through our process, you guys have it by September 1st every year, a balanced budget that we deliver as a proposal, and we have to get it done. The General Appropriations Act has to be passed by the end of the year. So, it's one of the most important things that a local municipality does every year. Our budget process starts in July, really towards the end of June. Finance provides budget worksheets to the departments. The department heads then look through, create their requests on their operating and capital plans, and they forward those. Finance prepares those, and we look at the entire thing, we start a budget review meeting where myself, Finance Director Kathy Sostak, and the department heads each meet individually, and we talk about what they're proposing. And we've put the whole thing together to see if we can actually balance it, what we need to do, and still meet all of our objectives. It's delivered to you by September 1st, and you've got till December 31st to make decisions about moving it forward. We're going to talk about, a little bit about description of, of the fund types, and then we're going to go into individual department discussions about what they're requesting for 2023. With that, Finance Director Kathy Sostak.
Good evening. Good evening. Tonight, I'm going to just start my discussion on the description of the fund types. And the reason this is important, the distinction between private sector accounting and governmental accounting is that in private sector, you typically have one budget. In governments, you deal with various funds. If you remember the budget books that you received, you received a larger one, it was the general fund and special revenue funds, which was an additional nine budgets. Each one of those are individually balanced. The reason for the, the various fund types is so that we can separate the expenditures with their associated revenues. The different types of funds, first of all, governmental funds. Governmental funds provide essentially general government services. Within the governmental funds, we have the general fund. The general fund is the The general fund is the largest fund of the township. It accounts for pretty much everything that isn't accounted for in a smaller special revenue or other type of fund. Special revenue funds, kind of exactly as the name implies, they distinguish or separate the various revenue sources with the specific expenditures associated with those. As an example, our building department fund or our trash collection fund. Next is the debt service fund. We have one debt service fund, which accounts for the repayment of debt for the building next door, the police department building. Our capital projects fund accounts for all of our capital projects within the governmental section. Next are proprietary funds. The township only has one proprietary fund, that's the Department of Public Works Fund. It's accounted for as more of a business-type of fund, and it accounts for the water sewer services, and is typically financed by like a user charge. This graph here, this chart here shows a summarized version of the 2023 proposed budget. And for comparison purposes, it also depicts the 2020 and 2021 actual activity, along with the 22 amended budget, and breaks it up by the revenues of general, police-fire revenues, and the various expenditures by department. As you can see, we have a balanced budget at $20.8 million. This pie chart here shows the revenue, general fund revenue sources. This section of the budget here is concentrating primarily on the general fund. As you can see, the property taxes and state sources account for about 75% of our revenue within the general fund, property taxes being the largest, and the remaining 25% are all of the smaller categories there. This same type of chart for the general fund expenditures, also by source here. Public safety, police and fire make up over half of the expenditures in the general fund. Public services is about 16%, 17%, and the remaining departments make up the remainder. Special revenue fund budgets, we have a total of nine budgets here that totaled just over $8 million. As you can see, our capital projects fund, the very last one, is our largest at about $2.7 million. Parks and Recreation and Solid Waste Fund are our next largest. Beginning the various departments within the general fund, Finance Department, which is my department, some of our responsibilities include financial reporting, budget preparation. We oversee the annual audit, prepare all the schedules for the auditors. State financial reporting. On a daily basis, we record all the financial transactions, monthly bank reconciliations, maintenance of all the asset records, and biweekly accounts payable. The goal of the Finance Department is to accurately present the results of the township's financial operations and clients with GAAP, generally accepted accounting principles, in a timely manner. And this department here provides the funding sources, both personnel and operating costs, so that we are able to accomplish this goal. The 2023 budget, it includes funds for a total of four positions. That is one additional position over last year. We are requesting the additional position just primarily due to the additional workload. Over the years, with police and fire coming on, it creates more accounts payable. Our accounts payable amounts have increased considerably. We are also looking at centralizing purchasing, also the daily activities, so I can take some of my responsibilities over so that I can concentrate more on financial reporting, all the GASB reporting requirements. And there's also an operating cost, too. We have included cost here for training. We have some limited audit assistance, which next year should be eliminated with the additional position. Right now, we did have two new positions hired last year, and we're still requiring a little bit of audit assistance. Also, a single audit that is now required with the federal awards that we are receiving. Once you exceed a threshold of $750,000, you have to have a single audit. And with the ARPA funds that we're receiving, we will be requiring one of those this year. Also, the appropriations and transfers section of the budget. This accounts for the post-employment benefits contribution, which is both OPEB and contribution can either go towards OPEB or the unfunded liability of our defined benefit contribution plan. That's about $776,000. And the remainder is for the transfer zone, which is where general funds support some of the other funds. In this case here, it's Parks and Recreation Fund, our Campus Project Fund, which is the payment of the debt service on the building, the police department building next door, and then our capital projects fund. At this point, I'll turn it back over to Superintendent Limat for his section.
Thank you, Ms. Sostak.
You're welcome. Thanks, Janice. So, hopefully, my department can be really brief, because I'm pretty sure you guys know what I do for a living. But in my department, it includes the executive coordinator, Melissa Roberts, human resource manager, Colleen Nedzwicki, and then we also have a human resource assistant, part-time, Megan Asselin. Obviously, my job is provide oversight for the entire township, as well as the chief administrative officer, to be your budget manager, and then to be that face of the township for a lot of the federal, state, and county agencies, to go after the economic development opportunities, to look for grants, and then obviously serve as a budget administrator. The goal of our department, obviously, is to maximize service delivery to taxpayers through efficient oversight of all operations. But what I always like to point out is that, you see this group of folks that are all sitting right here, this is the team that makes me look good, when, you know, I'm really proud of our operation of the township. We've done a phenomenal job. I love the direction. I love our administrative team. These guys work really hard, and they literally... Any accolades that I get, it's really because of the group of folks that are sitting right here. I'd be remiss if I didn't point that out. I want to bring up Human Resources Manager, Colleen. She'll just kind of give you a little bit of the reason why Human Resources is important to us.
Good evening.
Good evening. The goal for Human Resources is to help build the culture, hire and maintain quality employees to better serve our residents. Currently, we have 104 full-time employees and a blend of 68 seasonal and part-time employees. We provide employee and labor relations, payroll administration, recruiting and onboarding, budget administration, tax reporting, providing assistance to our retirees, and benefit administration. Our township, like many others, recruiting has been a challenge for us. This year, we changed our style, and we heavily focused on recruiting part-time and seasonal employees. We connected with Grand Blank Community Schools for their career center. We set up recruiting tables during their lunch hour and also email blast. In addition, we met with local colleges and universities. We've partnered with them, connected with them, and plan to attend their upcoming career affairs. With that said, our 2023 budget request is for an applicant tracking system and continued township-wide training. Thank you. And now Danielle Harrington, our assessing director.
Ms. Nedzwicki, how many employees did you say we have, total?
104 full-time and 68, a blend of 68 seasonal and part-time.
Okay.
My name is Lynn Henry. And Nancy Stilson.
Can't fool us.
They volunteered to be here, and we told them that we gave them an ID.
Okay.
So, I'm going to read over our clerks and Treasury Department. So, the clerk and Treasury Department work very closely side-by-side every day, especially during the busy times, and you can see it when you come in here. The different people helping you, our Treasurers Department may be helping you with ballots. So, the Clerks Department is responsible for record retention and record management. They administer all local, state, and federal elections. They handle the qualified voter file daily, which consists of about 10,000 changes per year, with people moving in and out of the township. Their budget changes are based on the coming election. There is Proposal 22-2 coming out, and if that passes on November 8th, we're not exactly sure how that's going to affect our office, so that could affect the budget. And the department, if it passes, the department will have nine days of early voting to the public. The Treasurers Department is responsible for preparing the tax roll, daily cash balancing, bills and taxes, and special assessments. They make the payment, we collect the taxes, so they make the payouts to other municipalities and schools. And they are the frontline for customer service, so they are the people that you see as you walk in the building. They do not have any additional budget changes for this year in the Treasurers Department, but in 2022, they added an additional part-time staff member. And now Danielle Harrington from assessing.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. The Assessing Department is responsible to assign value to all parcels within the township. These values are then utilized when establishing the township's budget. It's very important that we properly assess the values to these parcels, as an error could, and our assessments could result in an error in the revenue projections. Some of the responsibilities of the Assessing Department include inspecting approximately 600 new construction permits annually. This does include commercial, industrial, and residential properties. We establish land values and set economic condition factors for all real parcels. We perform 20% of re-inspections within the township throughout the township, which is about 2,600 annually. We also process deeds, PREs, transfers, and exemptions. Changes for the 2023 budget, we have requested to fill one open field appraiser position, and this will allow us to continue to maximize services for the residents of the community and allow us to meet our state mandated requirements.
Very good.
I believe it's me.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. The Information Systems Department role at a high level is to ensure that all township staff and elected officials have the tools and knowledge they need to serve the public securely and efficiently, while making sure that the critical data they need is readily available.
For some reason, the slide didn't advance. There we go.
To provide a better idea of what we do on a daily basis, below, I'm going to go over some responsibilities that the IT department has. The overall health and maintenance of the township technology as a whole, maintaining and improving the township's overall IT security posture, providing technical support and training to all of the township staff and board members, controlling the secure access to the township networks. We're also responsible for employee IT onboarding and offboarding. Some of the budget, the budget is increasing for 2023, and some of the major reasons for the increases are the inflationary costs across the board is increasing for much of what we're paying for, including mostly the licensing we're paying for, existing expenses that needed to be moved to the IT or added to the IT budget, new software to increase security and additional firewall licensing expenses. As we added on the fire station, too, to our network, we added a firewall, and that takes yearly licensing. Added a budget for renewing our server support contracts and SSL secure certificates. We are going to be upgrading or requesting that we upgrade the PDF editor software that we use in the township. Our existing version is from 2010, and it's starting to show its age. Increase in training budgets, IT training budgets, and an increase in the budget for professional IT services. With that, Matt Bowser.
Thank you. Our board understands there's probably, you had about 10 pages each that you had to boil down to one slide, so...
Good evening.
Good evening.
The fundamental duties of the Grand Blank Township Police Department include serving the community, safeguarding lives and property, keeping the peace, and ensuring the rights of all to liberty, equality, and justice. To accomplish those duties, it requires highly qualified professional police officers who uphold the highest ethical standards. In the next three years, the department will see 13 eligible officers for retirement. Recruiting new officers has been a challenge for several years now. This is not a problem unique to Grand Blank Township. This is a nationwide issue caused by many factors. To attract top-quality candidates, I am requesting that the township authorize funding for a police academy sponsorship program that would cover, that would pay for the cost of the academy and pay for a wage while that person attended the academy. The challenges we are seeing at the academies lately are that the majority of recruits are sponsored, meaning that a department has hired them and sent them to the academy. The current Flint Police Academy session has 27 recruits. 25 of those are sponsored by departments, leaving only two available to be hired outside of that. We are lucky enough to hire one of those, too. They're in our process right now. To assist in the sponsorship program, a new $30 million grant opportunity from NCOs was just announced yesterday. That would allow agencies to be reimbursed for up to $20,000 per recruit to cover academy costs, and up to $4,000 per recruit to cover salaries while attending the academies. That grant period starts January 1, 2023, and will last until September 30th of 2026. An agency can receive 25 of those scholarships. Another program to help with the recruiting started this past summer when we implemented the new cadet program. The program is designed to expose interested high school and college students to law enforcement. The program is an avenue to increase recruitment and to assess potential candidates... Sorry about that. ...potential candidates for a sworn position with this department. Cadets are responsible for many department tasks and assignments, and they are not sworn officers and are not given the authority to make an arrest or to take any law enforcement action whatsoever. Current funding has allowed us to bring two cadets into this program. Expanding this program could have significant benefits in filling open positions due to the upcoming retirements in the next few years. I'm requesting additional funds to be allocated in the cadet program to further enhance our recruitment and selection efforts. I'm also requesting the addition of a new full-time civilian position in the Chief's Administration Office. With the recent implementation of the body camera system and the upcoming installation of the new NCAR video cameras, it's going to drastically increase the amount of time it takes to complete a FOIA request. Because of that, it is necessary to create this new position that will be responsible for all FOIA requests, along with managing the accreditation process that will keep up with the yearly requirements to keep us in accredited agency. On average, the police department handles approximately 800 FOIA requests per year. A typical FOIA request for a criminal complaint could take up to eight hours or more of uninterrupted time if it involves two officers with body cameras and NCAR video cameras as well. For every hour of body camera video, it takes approximately three hours to watch, redact the necessary information, and get that released, get that ready to be released. I'm requesting this additional full-time position to help with the increased workload that will ultimately occur because of the new body cam technology. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
Good evening.
There we go. Okay, well, I think everybody knows what the Fire Department does. We do fire suppression, we do public education, we install carbon monoxide, smoke alarms, a lot of different things. I give you an annual report on what we do. So, for us, the big thing this year is we see four different challenges. This is from the firefighters themselves, we can talk about it. Retention and growth, or retention and recruitment. It's a problem for everybody, especially in the fire service and police service. A lot of people don't want to do our job, but we were able to, this year, retain four or obtain four new recruits on a part-time basis, and we're asking right now that we have additional funds into the budget this year to hire one full-time to handle the staffing shortages that occur during the day. Not a 24-hour shift, but an eight-hour shift that they would be working. Improving our service to the community, fundings are being requested to replace our obsolete equipment. We have a 27-year-old ATV or all-terrain vehicle that's used at large grass fires, accessing areas that have limited access, and in large community events. Want that replaced this year. A 23-year-old set of extrication tools needs to be replaced. And also, for 2023, we're asking, we'll be signing an agreement to purchase a replacement for our 100-foot platform truck that's 23-years-old, with delivery of that truck planned in 2025 to 2026, somewhere in there. Training, increasing our training budget will provide key individuals with the opportunity to bring training back to our department. to bring training back to our department, so that we can train our own firefighters, the train-to-train scenario, and then our station improvements. This is part of the strategic plan, and improving the living conditions at Station 1 will dramatically help us improve our retention and recruitment for our firefighters. And also, we've proved this, proven this year that by occupying Station Number 2, we decreased our response time into the southern portion of our township by three to four minutes. Renovating that station will accommodate for around-the-clock staffing. That's what we ask for this year.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Jeremy Smith, Planning and Zoning.
Good evening.
Planning and Zoning Department is tasked with shaping the future of the community. This is accomplished by the site plan review that follows the vision and standards of the Township Board and the master plan. Planning and Zoning Department provides services to all the residents, business owners, and developers. We also provide services to the Township Board, Planning Commission, and Zoning Board of Appeals. Planning and zoning goals include providing excellent customer service, streamlining and expediting development projects, addressing short and long-term development goals for the community, and implementing the master plan goals and objectives, and keeping zoning ordinances up to date. Our goals for 2023 are the Grand Blank Enterprise Park and the Tech Village Master Plan and the continued growth in the south end of town. The master plan and future land use goal of implementations, zoning ordinance text amendment revisions based on strategic plan objectives, which you've already seen a few of, and you'll be seeing more in the coming months. Also, more planning for my planning staff and the P C and Z B A members. The Planning and Zoning Department is requesting no extra funds for 2023.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Up next.
Good evening, Mr. Sears.
So tonight, we'll talk about first, the building and grounds and public services divisions. Building and grounds is exactly what it sounds like. We maintain township hall and the grounds around this property. So it also includes contractual cleaning, the mowing of our grounds around here, building supplies, and the capital improvement of this facility. The past few years, we've made significant strides in updating this building. If you'd been here, you know, 10 years ago, which some of you had, it's been untouched for a long time. This auditorium is a great example. The more improvements we make, the better environment is for staff, and this is the first impression that many developers and contractors get when they come to our township. We want to leave them with a good impression, and a beautiful renovation like this does just that, thanks to Melissa and a lot of the D P W staff that worked on it. So our, our goals for this is to continue light renovations and maintenance while maintaining the same funding levels that we have for several years now, and to continue enhancing the security of the buildings, which you'll see here, our budget request is $20,000 additional to do some ballistic proofing of some of the glass doors, and then expanding our card-key system throughout the building so that there's easier entrances into some of the offices and hallways and vestibules, so on and so forth. Our Public Services Department is all about the community. The first and foremost, we help maintain the infrastructure throughout, including roads, drains, catch basins, so on and so forth. We also provide some of the basic services that impact our residents the most, including snow removal and mosquito spraying. We take care of our cemeteries, and we also contribute to the Township and City like Joint Library. Our goal again for Public Services Department is to maintain the same level with no operational increases. This year, we have 1.3 million budgeted for special assessment districts and roads. Right now, that includes Concord Green and possibly Kings Point, and there are several other petitions out right now that could be approved. So hopefully, we see those proceed, and we see some improvements throughout the township. Building Department and Code Enforcement Department, as you know, they were joined into one with the D P W a couple of years ago, forming the Public Services Department, which I'm the head of. The responsibilities of the Building Department obviously is permitting and inspecting all residential and commercial building projects. Also, they do site plan reviews for commercial and residential projects and help enforce the Township general ordinances and zoning ordinances. Changes in 22, 2022 thus far have included the introduction of web-based permit issuance so that contractors no longer have to come here to fill out the forms and pay the fees and everything. They can do everything online. Right now, it's offered on a limiting basis, but hopefully, next year, we can expand that. We've also been revamping all of the paper applications that we do have to have to make them more simple and easier to use for our contractors, and expanding our instant inspection results out to our inspectors so that when an inspection's completed, those contractors get their results immediately via email. They don't have to go back to the property and look for a green sticker anymore, or call and say, what, you know, what do I need to do to get this to pass? They get all the results instantaneously, which is, it increases productivity in our community and helps them save time. Our goals for 2023 again is to expand our online permitting system and to expand use of technology by accepting digital plan submissions so that we can cut down on the paper we have here. As you know, we have an issue where we have historical paper plans that all need to be scanned. Hopefully, with the acceptance of digital plans, we can cut back on the need for scanning in the future. And then, there is no additional funding request for 2023 for this department. Also, we have code enforcement, which has been a big strategic plan goal for the Township Board. I'm happy to say that we've been very successful the past couple of years with this. They're responsible for the inspection of all of our properties throughout the township, for compliance with our township ordinances and zoning codes, and then obviously to complete those investigations from just communicating with the residents all the way through court proceedings if necessary. But as always, our goal is to communicate with residents and to work things out before we have the right citations, because we don't want to take it that far. We're going to do that in 2023 by enhancing more code enforcement strategies, making sure that we're out in the community further, and then continuing to educate the public on how to prevent us from knocking on your door, sending you a letter. Getting the word out on, these are the typical ordinances that you may not know about that we're going to be looking for. We also want to enhance access to the public for filing complaints using web forms or some type of mobile application, Q R codes, what have you, so that it's more accessible to everybody. 2023 budget request, again, no additional funding is requested. Hopefully, we can maintain or improve on the same services that we offer now with the same funding levels. And we've already went over the strategic plan goals, but here's another slide on it just in case. Again, adding online complaint submission, using professional development to help improve skills to our officers, continue to use other departments to identify code violations with an eyes-and-ears program, and then identifying areas of the township that need our help the most throughout the year. Next up is Parks and Recreation with Mr. Linehan.
Thank you, Mr. Sears. Good evening.
Good evening. So when we look at Park, Parks and Recreation, what do, what does Parks and Recreation do? Well, Parks and Recreation at its core provides a better quality of living for our residents, for our business owners, and for those who visit our community. So what we do with that is we're responsible for the park and trail maintenance, senior center operations. We also oversee the Historic District Commission. So how is the Parks and Recreation Department funded? Well, we're funded by multiple sources. First and foremost, we have the Parks and Recreation Village. This is our capital funding source that we put forth to, to fund those capital expenses that you see going on at Bicentennial Park. We also have the Senior Village, which accounts for more than half of the funding that comes in that operates the Grand Blank Senior Center. We have a lot of self-generated revenue from rentals, program fees, special events, sponsorships, and donations. We see community development block grants for programs at the Senior Center. We do get a little bit of general fund support. The American Rescue Plan Act, we've used some of that money. You could think back to the maintenance bar in a bicentennial that we toured. That's a prime example of getting our facilities back up to where we expect them to be in Grand Blank while using some of those alternative funding mechanisms. The staff, you know, they love that new facility. They can't wait to have a facility that they can work in this winter that they've never had before, so that's very exciting for our department. We go after all sorts of grants from local community grants all the way up to state and federal grants, and we'll be pursuing spark grants here in the next three years, and this is ARPA funding through the Michigan D N R specifically for Parks and Recreation. So some of the capital goals we have for 2023, you know, not all of this is the ooh and the ahs, but this is the stuff that we have to do to keep our facility at that level that we expect here in Grand Blank Township. So we'll be replacing one of our mowers. All of our mowers are eight years old or older, so we're going to start rotating those out. Renovations to the Little League building restrooms at Bicentennial Park. It's one of the most used facilities at Bicentennial Park, whether it's Little League practice a game, whether it's baseball, whether it's a softball league, or one of the large tournaments that we have coming in almost every weekend during the summertime, you know, bringing all those people in here to the community just to enhance that. Replacement of a maintenance truck, the upper quad, replacing all the backstops and line fences. Again, investing back into that facility so we keep getting that investment in our community, these tournaments. And, you know, all this, all these projects that we do, we have to engineer those to best standards, so some of that money goes towards that.
Can I kind of walk you through everything from the general fund and special avenue funds budgets? So what do we, how do we move forward from here? That's really up to you guys. What do you, what would you like from us? We can open it up right now for specific questions if you have any while the department heads are here in one place for anything that may have caught your eye while we were walking through the presentation. But we have a lot of time. We have until the end of the year. It's only October 4 today to approve this budget. Right now, our plan is that on October 18th, you'll review the Department of Public Works' water and sewer budgets for 2023. And then, we still have, you know, I think there's three meetings in November, two in December. I had initially put into our plan that we would be prepared to adopt the budget by November 15th meeting, but obviously, there's some flexibility there depending on the information that you guys need from either individual departments or from us as a whole. We can schedule additional meetings. We can schedule just departments back if that helps you. You guys just, you know, let us know or let Scott know what you need us to do to move this thing forward. If there's any specific questions, feel free to reach out to me directly, call any one of the department heads directly, and have them answer specific questions for you. We adopt that budget by Cost Center, but you're getting that line item budget, so there might be some questions on different expenditures in there. You can look back from the last prior three years and then leading up to our proposals. Take your time with it, and again, we're all available. We're here during the day. We'll come in at night if we need to, whatever you guys need to get your comfort level to where you feel that the budget is prepared to be adopted. That's all that we had. We had the truth and taxation hearing. We've got, you know, the public hearings have to be scheduled. We've got to notice it, so that's the only requirement is that we have the time to notice the public hearings for the budget adoption. Questions or feedback for the team?
Sure. So a couple of quick questions. Probably Mr. Sears with regard to the online permitting. Is that a software package we're looking at, or is that something that?
That's existing. So we do all that through our B S and A software right now. We've had it for a little while now. We've just activated, if you will, this year, so it's an existing thing that we'll be expanding on throughout the year.
And then, with regard to the code enforcement, going online for people to report various issues, whatever, is that a software package, or is that?
Hopefully, we'll be able to do it with our existing website platform that we have. I know they have online forums that we can use. And, you know, it's as simple, also, as creating a QR, QR code that will send us an email or something. So there's a lot of basic alternatives that we can use for that.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. One other question on, for Mr. Sears too.
No, actually, I was for.
I have one now for Mr. Sears while he's up here. The S A D, so we have, you mentioned a couple of Potomac Road projects. The county has put forth, you know, the opportunity to put 10% of their money additionally towards that, those projects if we put 10% in. Is that something that any of our road projects are looking at?
So that's not, that's some more discussions we have to have here at the township level. The Road Commission has offered, if they, if we put forth 10%, they will put forth 10%. But obviously, that's something we have to budget for, and that's very hard to know what to plan for, because these projects, you know, we can say there's, say, five petitions out right now, there may be one successful petition, successful petition this year. We do have one project that's for sure going to go. They had a successful petition drive, but we have not talked about whether or not that funding is going to be available for that project yet or not. I don't believe it's budgeted for yet.
It is not, if that, if the board, because this was new from the Road Commission, if you're interested in making that offer to the folks to help them pay for those special assessment districts, that additional 10%, we just need to know that to budget for it and then to give an idea, I mean, how much are we willing to put towards it? Because we got to cap it somewhere, and it is capped by the Road Commission, $150,000 for each municipality. So, I mean, we could put in up to $150,000 per year. Obviously, there's a trade-off. It comes from somewhere. Here, typically, it would come in the money that you saw we had allocated towards unfunded liabilities.
Right.
But we could take it out of, you know, another area if the board has that need to, they want to see that trade-off.
Okay.
But it's not included in the proposed budget to you at this point.
Right, okay.
Mr., I'm sorry, Clerk Robertson.
A question for Dennis or maybe Chief Bowserman. It didn't surprise me that it was mentioned that the costs associated with foias and the body cameras and that, but I was a little surprised at the labor-intensive. You mentioned for every hour of, of video, there's three hours of redaction?
Correct. And the reason is, a lot of things on the, on the body cameras have to be redacted, dealing with the juvenile, you know, we have to blur out the face. If names are said, we have to blank out the names. If the officer's sitting in their car and they have their M T C screen there, that has to be blanked out so no pertinent information can be seen. But it is a, it's a very labor-intensive process of going through each one of those videos, and if there's two officers on scene, that foyer coordinator's going to have to do that two different times.
That, that, boy, that's, and can we, because we now have the body cameras, we likely have an increase in the number of foias or just the, the amount of foia, information in each foyer?
Even, even if the foyer amounts remain the same, that time is going to increase because most attorneys, when they, when they submit a foyer, they ask for any and all videos. So that means with the Incar, now we have the body cameras, which is, Incars are going to be a little bit more. We're, we're not totally sure on that because we don't have that equipment in our cars yet, but the body cams are going to add a lot of time to go through all those videos, sit and watch every one of them. So that's an hour video that they have to watch, plus all the time it takes to redact all the information, stop and start and then stop and start.
And we purchased redaction software for that purpose?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
Came with the.
Boy, that just, that just struck me as, as the amount of time necessary to do that is just, I mean, that's, that's a lot of man-hours there, Dennis.
It is a lot of man-hours, but it's a blessing and a curse, right? Having those body cams. We have a, you know, accolades that go to our police department here. We have professional officers. We looked at the investment in body cams as a way to make sure that we have the ability to clear ourselves in the event of, of challenges or charges, right? We think it's a good thing that our officers are going to have those body cams, but it does come at a price. And like the redaction software that Chief Bowserman told you about, one of the things we found out, like if, say, you're doing a redaction, you put it on like a laptop screen so that it's going to be redacted. If something goes across that and an officer moves his hand while he's looking at it, you have to go back in and start that up again. It won't keep running once something breaks that plane. So there's a lot of things. It, it's incredibly labor-intensive. We knew that going into it. It's just, you know, being able to work, will there be improvements in the software as we move on? Yeah, I hope so.
So just to be clear, I have no objections. I support what we're doing. I just, I, it just, it surprised me a little bit at the, the three-to-one ratio in terms of the hours versus the, the redaction. That was quite something.
So correct me if I'm wrong, we're able to charge for those foias for the
It's just, you know, being able to work, will there be improvements in the software as we move on? Yeah, I hope so.
So just to be clear, I have no objections. I support what we're doing. I just, it just surprised me a little bit at the, the three to one ratio in terms of the hours versus the redaction. That was quite something.
So correct me if I'm wrong, we're able to charge for those FOIA's for the time involved in doing all this redaction, so.
We will be charging accordingly with those.
So the cost of a FOIA is going to increase now that we have video because obviously the time involved is much greater than just making copies of paperwork or what have you.
Correct, yes.
So not that that's all that we did was copies of, but there's a lot more intensity to it and the cost will be higher. Yes.
I have a question. Who are we charging?
The attorneys that ask for the FOIA. Well, anybody, anybody who had requested, doesn't have to be an attorney, I guess, anybody.
Okay, I just wondered who.
Right.
But it's the lowest.
Dr. Riden.
We have to charge what the lowest person can do, not necessarily what maybe the administrative assistant does right now. Her wage, right?
Correct.
Well, in this case, it'll be the person that is capable of doing the redaction on the video, right? So, so they're, essentially their wages will be covered by the, or a good portion of them be covered?
A portion, yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Mr. Supervisor.
Yes, Mr. White.
Kind of building office. Obviously these body cams are going to be discoverable in criminal cases. How much more, do we have an idea of how much more, just the simple fact of providing body cams to the prosecutor's office and/or defense attorneys for these cases? Is that going to be a substantial increase too?
I don't, I don't think it'll add to the requests that we already have. It's just going to get 800 if we continue to get approximately 800 a year. That just adds that much more time to doing those 800. We don't expect it to increase to 1,200 or 1,400. It's just each one that we currently do, add body cameras into that, into that equation, it's going to add that much more time.
Okay, Mr. White.
I've got a question for Dennis. The last three years, our budgets were 18 million, 18 million, 18 million. And then this year, it's 20 million. Can you explain that?
So if you take a look at some of those, and I don't want to flip all the way back, but if you look at it, look at what is budgeted in there that makes the difference. It isn't that we had revenue that went up because our taxable value skyrocketed so high, but you also have appropriations in. You've got plans for bond funds coming in, 1.3 million dollars allocated for special assessment districts, you know, that kind of thing. So yeah, we did get some additional revenue through, like I said, it's nice that our taxable value went up. It's nice that our revenue sharing went up based on the population. It didn't go up by $2 million, however. It has more to do with the appropriations of.
So for example, when we have a special assessment district for a neighborhood, if it's a $2 million project, we're going to bond that for $2 million and we're going to get $2 million for that project. So it appears on our books as though we have 2 million in.
And it goes out.
Right. So. Any other questions for Mr. Limida or any of our department heads? I think it's one of the best presentations I've seen with my time on the board, Mr. Limida. So a great job to you and your department heads. I think, you know, it was very clear in terms of what the priorities are for this next year and also keeping a view with what our priorities are as a board. I think that, you know, the things that are being proposed are things that we, we need to do. They aren't, you know, things that we could do without. They're things if we want to move forward, we need to, we need to take action. So I'm very pleased with, with all of the requests. And I think, you know, I don't see any real issue on my part with, with the budget where it's at. And I'm not sure where the rest of the board is at, if there's any concerns, but I don't think, I don't hear anybody asking for individual meetings with department heads, what have you. So I think maybe the board review the, the budget for the next week or so and I think we'll be ready to move forward in the next few weeks.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, we're going to get our technology set up here. And make sure Nate doesn't leave yet. This is, I wish you would. You're plugged in up there? Okay, okay, all right, that's, that's coming now. It'll be up in just a minute. It takes a second. There we go.
Thanks, Kathy. Beautiful.
Okay, so as everyone knows, we've been moving through the planning for the construction of our new DPW and fire facilities here on this campus. We've been making pretty good progress thus far. We've hired our owners representatives, which is Plant Moran here tonight. We validated our space needs assessment, which was done by Redstone Architects several years ago. And now we have gone through the process of selecting an architecture firm. So Plant Moran is here to highlight where we have been, where we're going, and what's up before you tonight. So I'll let them take it away. They have a brief presentation for you.
Good evening.
Good evening. It's a tough act to follow, but we will do our best. It will not take nearly as long. Our, our presentations are meant to be brief but informative. And we don't have pie charts. But as Mr. Sears had alluded to, my name is Andy Fountain. I'm with Plant Moran Cressa. We've been engaged by Grand Lake Township to serve as your program manager, owners rep for the new DPW and Fire Station program. Our role is to provide assistance and advice to plan and implement this program. This evening, we have, as I mentioned, a quick update. We'll talk about what we've done. We have a award recommendation for AE or Architect and Engineering Services. And then we'll talk about what you can expect in the next three to four months. With me tonight is Rick Erickson. He's going to be the project manager for this program. I'm going to let him run through the rest of the presentation. Thank you.
You and good evening. This whole presentation was meant to be very brief but informative. So if you have any questions throughout, please fire away. But just to talk briefly about what we've been up to since we last presented here a few months ago is focused primarily on the architect selection. And this just highlights kind of, is a high level overview of our process and the steps we've implemented to get to the point where we can recommend a firm. We developed and released a request for proposal, which outlined the criteria for the project in terms of scope, schedule, and budget. We conducted mandatory pre-proposal meetings with all the prospective AE firms to make sure they understand those parameters. We got great coverage. We received eight proposals from eight different AE firms. We thought that was very good for this project. And we utilized a criteria based selection process to evaluate each firm's proposal. In that criteria based selection process, use pre-established criteria that you see bullet pointed there below, which was relevant municipal experience, their project approach, their proposed fee, their proposed team and staff experience, and then contract exceptions or exclusions and whether they had any and what, to what extent. And then finally, based on those first five bullet points, we selected the top three highest scoring to interview, which we did in that room right over there. And then based on the interviews and the total scoring, we've boiled it down to our final selection and what will be our recommendation for this evening. As I mentioned, based on the criteria based selection data, at this point, we are recommending to award the contract for AE services to Detroit Architectural Group, or DAG. And the contracts for those services at this point are based on their 6.2% fee for the cost of work, which equates to $930,000. Before I go on to the next slide, any questions yet on the process or how we arrived at the recommendation?
They've done other fire departments?
They are, they are teaming with a firm out of Minnesota called BKV, who are experts in fire stations. Put them over the edge, a lot of the project team. Yeah, they have a very, yeah.
So maybe just mention who was involved in the interview process. Mr. Sears, Mr. Limida, and yourselves or?
Yes, myself, Andy.
Okay, very good. Yes, Mr. Kilmer.
If this is the time to bring it up or not, but I'm a little disappointed that we don't have local firms, you know, competing with us.
I don't know, we may have had some local firms submit requests, proposals, right?
Well, the project manager from DAG is local here. His, the firm is actually in Farmington Hills. He is local here and is very, that was one of the things he pointed out in his presentation is that he's very tied to this.
Community.
I know they're out of Brandon, is, okay. My apologies, that was the wrong firm, but.
We did, we did engage with Mr. Sears and, and the township too. I understand that there were local firms and we extended the invitation to make sure that they were aware that they had, the information was out there and that they wanted to participate, that they were able to do so.
Sure.
So they just didn't respond to your invitation?
Correct, there were some that didn't respond. We did get some local firms that did send proposals for the project, but they just didn't qualify based on the criteria we set and they didn't compare it to some of the bigger players like DAG that were able to submit very comprehensive and thorough proposals and basically just blew us away in the process.
Clerk Robertson.
Fire stations are a fairly nichey market and there's, there's not a lot of firms that specialize in that.
I know fire stations, hospitals, same way.
Yeah.
You anticipated my comment. It's always, we desire us if we can get, employ locals to be sure. But this is a highly specialized area of architecture and design, I should think. It's understandable why we have to go further afield because of the nature of the work involved being done.
Right.
To the point, we're going to go through the same process for the construction manager selection. So we'll, we'll work with Mr. Sears, we'll look at the rest of the township, understand there are local firms, we'll reach out to them, make sure that they're, you know, in the know, if you will, about the process, about the, and the opportunity. Make sure that we extend that invitation to participate.
I sincerely hope we do because it's, I think it's important to bring this in, back into the community.
Dr. Riden.
So when you say local firm, are you saying somebody from Grand Lake Township or somebody from Genesee County?
Yes.
Yes. No, 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 the people that you, or you went through the process already and, and I was looking at them and you had the scores highlighted in yellow. But the, out of those eight, were any of those Grand Lake Township? They were just, this Genesee County?
A lot of Genesee County. A lot of Oakland County, Wayne County. I mean, I don't know that there were any out of state firms. Obviously, yeah, DAG has out of state consultants, but nothing Grand Lake Township.
You know, that's, that was my, because when we say local, I'm thinking Grand Blank, not necessarily.
Right.
The solicitation was not fully advertised, so in that perspective, it is available to.
Right.
Yeah. And I think, you know, that's what, but our goal is to find the best, you know, potential work, you know, expertise in this area. I mean, we're building something that we're only going to build once every 50 years or more and it needs to be done right the first time. I would like, you know, it'd be great if we had a local firm that specialized in this and had experience and what have you. And I understand, and we're not done with this yet because there are several other things that you have to bid out, right? And those are going to be, again, broadcast to everybody in that universe. And if there's local firms that can bid on that and can compete based on our criteria, then I'm sure, you know, they'll, they'll have their day.
Yeah, and I do want to say that. I'm, I'm for quality. I mean, if, 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 if somebody provides a better quality than somebody here, I'm all for taking the best person. So I mean, don't, I don't want to be misconstrued.
Yeah.
Absolutely. And that's important, but the expertise was weighted heavily.
Correct.
Sure. Yep, exactly. Anybody else have any thoughts on that? I'm sure you're not done with your presentation.
Yeah, one more slide, but I'm happy to address anything regarding the selection. Just on to next steps. Obviously execute the contracts with the AE and the kickoff, the first design phase, which is program validation and schematic design phase. Just a quick high level, schematic design is really where we're just trying to nail down the floor and where all the pieces fit together and make sure we have the right pieces. As Andy mentioned, we're going to be switching gears now to select a construction manager. Our goal is to have them onboard by the time we wrap up schematic design so they can provide a schematic design cost estimate, see how close we are to our target.
Just very quickly, that process will, as Rick alluded to, will help us to select a construction manager. The first phase of those services, what's described as pre-construction services or estimation. So as we work through the various design, design phases, schematic, design development, construction documents, that construction manager will be able, be able to help us in that process by providing cost information, real time information. So as we work towards a bid, bidding the project, we can make sure that the design is, is closely aligns the budget, the intended budget, as we possibly can. So we don't get to bid day and have surprises. So that's the intent of bringing the construction manager on, you know, earlier in the process.
I, I've heard some great things about your firm and that you are great with holding people's feet to the fire and what have you. And making sure we're going to get what we need. I guess, you know, my question, having never gone through this process, is, you know, the functionality of the building is, you know, the primary concern, right? But also to me, the, the look of the building is, you know, important because it's going to be here forever. Where does that fall into, you know, the, the plan in terms of, you know, I know we're going to look at, you know, space and that kind of thing. We've already reevaluated with Redstone, our space need analysis. But when do we start looking at or who, who looks at? You know, what do we want the thing to kind of appeal? You know, what kind of direction will we go on the look and with that kind of?
Right, well, I mean, some of the great architects say that the plan is the generator. So once the plan is settled, the building exterior will start to evolve out of that once the pieces are, are set. But we'll do early in this design phase, some case studies to start to identify what is the, you know, what is the aesthetic? Are we trying to tie into some other existing community buildings? Are we trying to create a new standard for the community?
Okay.
That'll all be in the, in the early stage.
So the board will have some input on, on that portion of it as far as how it looks and?
If they choose to, yes.
It might be interesting meetings, but to get seven people all agree on the look, right? You want me to just decide, Jude? You and I? Okay.
And then just the last item is we're also going to be working on giving the furniture vendor selection as well to get them onboard during schematic design as well or later in, in the next design phase. And again, for any kind of local participation in that.
Sure. Okay, anybody have any questions? Andy or Rick? Joel?
Rick, you've done these before, these kinds of big building projects. Have you worked with this DA, G before?
I have not personally worked with DAG, but the remains that I've heard in our industry for quite some time, it just hasn't, it starts having a line for us to work on this particular type of project.
All right. And then when do we, when do you guys pick who the construction firm will be? What, roughly, when will that happen?
Oh, as soon as I get back to the office tomorrow morning, we're going to start the CM RFP and try to get that out within the next few weeks.
Correct me wrong, we have a meeting scheduled with Mr. Sears for Friday to review the RFP and the contracts that want to, want to do the dates and times, make sure that we're aligned and then that'll go over issuance next week potentially. And then that process is in a month to six weeks before we come back with a.
Same duration.
Recommendation, you know, give or take.
At that point, we'll be maybe midway through schematics.
Okay. Any other questions, concerns, thoughts? Okay, it's exciting time.
Is the motion in order, Mr. Supervisor?
Yes, it is.
Well, then I will make the motion on item 8B to approve the professional services contract with Detroit Architectural Group for Architecture and Engineering Services for the DBS facility in Fire Station 1.
Ms. Hugo supports that motion.
Okay, motion and support. Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, nothing, motion passes.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, item C, the board will consider resolution twenty-two dash two zero for approval of fireworks for the holiday tree lighting event and authorize the superintendent to execute the agreement. Tell you what, last year's fireworks were absolutely spectacular. They were incredible.
Thank you.
Same plan for this year?
Uh, yeah, it's just going to be a little bit shorter with the cost of everything. You went from about $3,000 for a container up to $12,000 and you got to buy it. So, you know, the, the, the costs for a lot of their shows are going up, but we've kept it within our budget on this. And, you know, nobody's going to really notice a change with it just being.
Last year it appeared that they were emptying their warehouse. The fireworks just went on forever.
Okay.
When is this event again?
Uh, this is the holiday tree lighting on December second.
Second.
It's a Friday, right?
Yes.
Mr. White, were you making the motion? Okay.
Okay, motion by White?
Yep, supported by Doctor Raridan.
Doctor Raridan, supported by Raridan. Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, nothing, motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you. Item D, the board will consider resolution twenty-two dash twenty-one to approve the truth in taxation maximum allowable millage levy. I think everybody had their questions answered earlier in the evening on this. Doctor Raridan, you making the motion? Okay, supported by Mr. Fike.
Motion by Raridan, supported by Fike. Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, nothing, motion passes.
Thank you. Item E, the board will consider resolution twenty-two dash twenty-two for the poverty exemption income guidelines and asset test for 2022. Mr. Limbada?
So every year the board's asked to approve the resolution for the poverty exemption income guidelines and asset test. It used to be done, it wasn't done every year. They changed that a few years ago to make us go through it. It is adjusted for inflation. All of the guidelines were included in your board packet, so you could see it. And Director of Assessing Danielle Harrington is here to answer any specific questions that the board may have.
Does anyone have any questions? Anyone care to make the motion for the poverty exemption?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Supervisor.
Okay, supported by Ms. Hugo.
Supported by Hugo. Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, nothing, motion passes.
Thank you. Item F, the board will consider a motion to approve the amended L forty twenty-nine. Mr. Limbada?
This is the form that we send to the county by October first or September thirtieth every year. You guys did approve this, but after it was approved, we noticed that there was one change in it. It didn't, it did not impact the millage requested to collect. It had to do with the rounding, the maximal allowable millage levy on the mosquito millage. It was rolled back when it didn't need to be because it was a brand-new millage that was passed by the voters in August of this year. So it's just to correct the forty twenty-nine, that's it. It's already been submitted to the county again. Doesn't change any of the millage rates. It's just a minor correction on the forty twenty-nine having to do with mosquito millage.
Can you quit making the motion? Mr. Fike makes the motion, supported by Mr. White.
Supported by Mr. White. Okay, very good. Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, nothing, motion passes.
Thank you. Item G, the board will consider a motion to award Michigan Automatic Sprinkler as the lowest responsible bidder for the irrigation phase one project at Bicentennial Park. Mr. Linehan?
All right, so we've talked about it a couple of times tonight. The, um, the capital that we're putting in to, to revitalize Creasy Bicentennial Park and a lot of that has to do with the ball fields. So one of the things that we're doing, and this is going to be a two-phase project, but the first phase that we'll be doing is the lower softball quad. So fields seven through 10, those are those four fields down in the bowl there. And we'll be adding irrigation and irrigation's important to us. Not only does it keep the quality of grass out there, but also keeping the infield moist. We have a huge problem with being able to keep our infields wet. They get very dusty and, you know, we lose material. And when we drag the fields during tournaments, it makes it really dusty. So this is one of the things that we'll be looking to do.
Ms. Hugo makes the motion.
Motion by Hugo?
Supported by Mr. Fike.
Supported by Fike. Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, nothing, motion passes.
Thank you. Item H, the board will entertain a motion for the use of C D B G funds for roofing repairs at the senior center. Mr. Linehan?
Um, so this is one of the projects that's been previously approved. We went out for bid on it and it went out for bid about, or the project was scoped out about three years ago. As with anything right now, it came in a little bit high. It didn't come in that high. We would be looking at an extra $1,200 and the city would be looking at an extra $1,200. But when we scoped this, we scoped this at, at the worst-case scenario. As part of this, you know, we'll be removing the roofing membrane, so we'll take a look at it. We scoped out decking being replaced. Odds are most of the decking won't need to be replaced along with some other aspects of this. So we're confident that we can get this done at budget, but we just put it in here at that higher number just, just to be safe.
Any questions, concerns, thoughts? Okay, then the motion would be in order unless, okay, Mr. White makes the motion, supported by Mr. Fike.
Supported by Fike. Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, nothing, motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you. Number nine, future agenda items. Mr. Limbada, anything that you have on the horizon for the next meeting?
Uh, one thing to remind the board is that during our work session on the strategic plan, we had a focused discussion on our mission statement and the potential need to update that. We haven't had that conversation since then. That was the end of July. I think that's probably something that we should get back in front of the board for conversation on where you guys want to go with that. And then we'll provide some additional updates on where we are on some strategic plan items. Now that we've got the, we're making some forward progress on the Point North Business District, I think that will, should become before you just about every other, you know, every two weeks now. To see if we can keep that momentum going.
Sure, anyway, we could get some, maybe all of us can look for some examples of mission statements for municipalities that, that we could look at. Not that we want to plagiarize, but it might give us some, stimulate some ideas of maybe combining some things. I guess if anybody has any of those, if, or you see one that you like, if you want to forward it to Ms. Roberts and maybe she can share them with everybody. Stimulating some ideas for the next meeting, so we don't come in here.
We can certainly pull some together before the next meeting to just provide like a sheet.
Yeah.
And tell you where they're coming from, kind of give you an idea of maybe some that we thought were impactful and we'll provide that to the board.
Okay. I just don't want to come to the next meeting with a blank slate and it may take us a few hours to come up with something unless we come here with some, some ideas. Okay, anything else from anybody for future agenda items that we want to make sure we cover at some point? Okay, board reports. Ms. Hugo, anything with planning commission?
Our next meeting is on Thursday.
Okay.
And then I don't have any other comments on that, but I had a few comments on a couple of other things.
Sure.
To Chief Bowserman, there was an incident that occurred down the street from us, I believe it was last Thursday evening, late in the evening. And the suspect ended up in my neighborhood and I was sleeping, but some of my neighbors witnessed it and they all had commented on what a wonderful job the officers did.
Very good to hear.
And then also I wanted to comment on the water tower appearance as well as the sign on Grand Blank Road at the park and all the landscaping. It looks amazing. I, and honestly, like, I never noticed them before. But it's very eye-catching. The water tower, my husband and I were driving down the road and I said, oh my gosh, they finished it. It looks amazing. So, yeah, it looks great.
Even more visible when we get Baldwin Road open, right?
Oh, right.
Oh, that's great. Thank you, Ms. Hugo. Okay, Mr. White?
No update.
I'm sorry?
No update.
Okay, all right. Mr. Fike, anything? Doctor Raridan?
Okay. Mr. Kilmer?
I'm good. If everybody else is good, anybody has any questions, we'll try and answer them.
Okay. Clerk Robertson?
The dispersal of absentee ballots, satisfying application requests is underway. The staff worked this weekend and put out, I believe, somewhere in the neighborhood of 3,000 of those ballots already and it's just ongoing and all is well.
A question, how is the, the number of absentee ballots? Is that on par with the previous elections?
I believe, well, it's actually, it was statewide. It's up, up beyond where it was in 2018. I don't have precise numbers, but I can get those. My guess is, my guess is that it's, it's up.
Here locally, it's up.
Here locally, yes.
All right.
Can I ask him a?
Yes.
This new state law that passed or is, I'm not sure if it's technically been signed yet, is that likely to speed things up on election day? Pre-processing?
The, 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 yes, the, well, the pre-processing allows for the opening or the beginning of the, the physically opening of the outer envelopes, obviously maintaining security in that. The belief is that it, it will, it will speed things up a, a, a bit. I would simply point out that we already have taken a giant leap forward because of this board's support for the purchase of the, 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 the high-speed counting machine. But yes, the volumes are higher in November and the legislature moved on it because they wanted to, to afford the opportunity for speed and ease for this election. So yes, the answer is yes.
Okay, thank you, Clerk Robertson. With regard to a couple of items, I mentioned at a previous board meeting that General Motors had contacted, I mean, said, us here, and said that basically they were taking the G M S P O building off the market. And we received a phone call this past week that they have found a use for that building. They're going to, if you haven't seen it in the news, it's going to be the G M Heritage Center. They have a similar type facility that they're going to move from Sterling Heights to this area. It's, I think the facility in Sterling Heights is much smaller than this one. This one's about 370,000 square feet, I think. So it's a fairly large facility. They plan to bring 600-plus cars here from their, you know, they have, obviously they probably have every car that they've ever made, a replica or, you know, a model of it. There may be some opportunity for them to do some displays outside as well, they said, and eventually possibly open it to the public. They didn't say that that's the first priority. I think the first priority is to maybe use it for internal use. I'm not sure, but they said that the plan is to try and open it for public use. So that, that's something great for the community, something great for G M S P O. And, you know, we don't need a vacant building of that size. It'd be nice to have a couple thousand employees all coming and going from there, but who knows? This thing opens to the public, maybe it'll generate quite a few people coming to the community to, to see it, which makes our priority for making the exits look great even higher, right? That overpass, what have you, but that's great for the Hill Road Corridor or, or that area as well. We need development throughout the township and I think that's something very good. With regard to the 911 consortium, just an update, we actually received the data that we had requested from 911. We actually have spent some time analyzing it and sorting it because it was basically sent to us in a bulk. What do you kind of call it, in a bulk format? And so we've had a number of people work on it to divide it out by municipality. We emailed the, the 911 and asked them to actually do some sorting because we want to compare what, what they come up with, with our notes before we release what we found. So we, we may be meeting with some of the staff from 911, Dennis, myself, maybe a couple others here in the next few days just to compare what we've been able to analyze and compare it to what their numbers say, just to make sure that before we release them, that we're on the same page. With regard to another issue that is a county issue that the township, you know, works as a, more or less like a consortium, and that's the road commission. The road commission, it may not be apparent to everybody, but the road commission works for the townships. Cities have their own road divisions, right, their own road funding and departments. In the county, the townships are served by the, by the road commission. And so there, there are what about four or five commissioners that sit on the board that oversee the operations of the road commission. Those individuals are chosen by the county commissioners. And there is a couple of vacancies that are coming up on that, and there's one immediately right now to be filled. It's the concern of the township supervisors who Clerk Robertson reminded me earlier today that, or actually educated me, I didn't, I wasn't aware of this, but the county commissioners actually used to be known as the Board of Supervisors.
Governing entity was the Board of Supervisors.
So.
For the Board of Commissioners.
So the commissioners predecessors years ago were actually a board of supervisors. One of the things that the township supervisors from around the county feel very strongly, and it's actually in the, I don't know, the county doesn't have bylaws, but it's in the county, what would you call it, statutes or county?
Ordinance.
Ordinance that says that members of that road commission board shall be members of townships, residents of township. Well, there's been some wiggle room. Doesn't say they must, they shall be or something like this and so, but it's the contention of the, the supervisors. And I haven't heard from any supervisor at any of our meetings that disagrees, but there's, we want to send a letter and actually attend the county board meeting tomorrow morning to emphasize that when they choose somebody for the road commission board, they should be somebody from one of our townships that are served by the road commission. Not somebody from one of the cities, but somebody from, or even outside of the county. It should be somebody from our township. So that's point number one. The second point is we want somebody who has some experience on a board and governance. And then with budgets, what have you. And then thirdly, somebody who's familiar with road projects. You know, we're, we're dealing with situations here where, you know, it's millions of dollars that we're dealing with. And these projects can, we know from, you know, our projects here, Baldwin Road, what have you, how it can interrupt people's lives. And so, and it's the township residents that it affects, so why not have somebody from the townships actually serve on that? So what I'm asking this board to do is to allow me to send a letter to the Board of Commissioners tonight that basically states those three things on behalf of our board. And then also I plan to go to the meeting with other township supervisors and reinforce that tomorrow. So I don't know if there's a consensus among this board that that's our feeling, but. I think it only makes sense.
Okay. Very good.
Do we need a resolution?
I think if you have consensus and you understand your direction, I think you're good.
Okay.
Very good. All right, we'll keep you posted on both those issues in our next meeting.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Attorney Laddie?
Nothing to add. Good luck tomorrow.
Thank you. Mr. Limbada?
A quick update, police negotiations are continuing. We've made great progress. I feel very positive still on both sides of where we're at. Clearly, I mean, we're a part on what we're going to do about the defined benefit pension plan, what's the best way to solve that issue, but both sides recognize that it must be solved. So we'll meet somewhere in the middle. We're continuing to do it. Further analysis was needed on the costs of different scenarios. I did get some actuarials in, but I'm looking at maybe a discussion about with a municipal finance expert on if we did look at bonding it out. Bond costs are up a little bit right now. Don't know that it's the right time to do it. Couple of things come into play. You have to be able to save at least 15% over what you're paying now. You got to have AA credit rating, which we have. You can bond up to 95% of it. You cannot enhance a retirement benefit once you've bonded it for the 10 or 20 years that the bond is being repaid back. So there's some very particular limits that go along with one of those general obligation pension bonds. So we're looking into that to try to come up with it, but it was very positive. We've had good meetings. We discussed whether we should go to just mediation. It's non-binding, but it's a good way. It tells you how close we are, really not that far apart, but quite frankly, I have to be able to let you guys know that we can afford our solution. So I want to make sure that I'm giving you fact-based information in order to base your decision now when it comes down to it. So progress continues. We don't have, we didn't schedule the meeting now. We spoke last Friday. We decided to, you know, give me another two weeks to find out the information that I'm seeking, and then we'll meet again with the bargaining units to see where that goes. I feel very, very positive that we're making great progress. The police chief recruitment continue. That position is posted and open until October 7th. Will be the end of the posting date. As of this weekend, we had 20 applicants, so after two weeks, that's very good. The third week, usually a big push, so I will not be surprised if we end up at 30 applicants or potentially more. That's great, great feedback. We got some good-looking candidates coming in, so we'll see where we end up with, you know, on the 7th, be able to compile them all. I will meet with the recruiter, Frank, at that time, kind of weed through them, and then, as we discussed, bringing the police committee together to kind of have a conversation about the candidates that we have and how we're moving forward through that interview process. But we appear to still be on track and expect to be able, that we're going to have that position filled by the end of 2022. One last shout-out on the budget questions. If there's anything, as you're going through your budget, you just have an individual question, like I said, feel free, email, call me, text me, I don't care. Reach out to any of the department heads for that specific department question, if that helps get your questions answered. If it doesn't, then let me know, and we'll absolutely get your questions answered for you. And then one last note, some of you have probably heard this, it's been kind of delayed. We're making sure that everything was good to go, but Parks and Recreation Director Patrick Linehan has submitted his resignation notice. He will be leaving us very soon and accepting a position as the Deputy Director for Genesee County Parks and Recreation. So while we're sad to see Patrick go, we really appreciate the contributions he's made over the last few years. What an exciting opportunity for him. We always celebrate when somebody comes in and they're able to better themselves, and it just means we have a friend in the Genesee County Parks Department now. So I'm assuming there will be lots of money rolling back towards us when it comes to county parks. But we will have a little thing in the next meeting in two weeks, just to recognize and honor Patrick, but I wanted to give the board the heads up. We'll start the recruitment immediately on that position.
I think we should talk to some people about getting funding for pathways from the county, from the park, county parks.
Patrick assures us that we will have no problem getting funding for pathways once... Don't let us down, Patrick. He's been a real asset to us, and again, we're sad to see him go, but it's always exciting for us to see somebody come in and, you know, you know, take himself to the next level. You know, he was focused on maintenance. He came in and worked in operations and maintenance and oversight as a director, and now he moves into Deputy Director of the County Parks. That's really awesome. That's really cool. We have nothing, you know, it just gives us a reason to celebrate what he was able to do and how he proved himself and improved his skill set to move on to the next level